City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, October 17th, at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence and send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Go, Rita.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson?
Here.
Mr. Hendrick?
Here.
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Vanabosh?
Here.
City Manager Reeves?
Here.
Okay, on to four, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under number five, presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have none. On to six, for public comment, anyone is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes, the commission will not respond, we will follow up as necessary. Please remember to direct all your comments towards the commission and through myself as the chair. Is there anybody who'd like to speak?
Chief, come on.
It's an empty night tonight.
Public comment? Okay, if there's no public comment, then we'll move on to number seven, approval of the minutes. They have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of October 3, 2024.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. On to item eight, for the consent agenda, we have the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, the Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals Meeting Minutes of July 10th, 2024, the Special Event Permit Application for the Marine City Old Newsboys Annual Paper Sale, the Special Event Permit for the Marine City Old Newsboys Holly Jolly Santa Parade, the Special Event Permit Application for the Council on Aging for the Woodlawn Cemetery Walk, the Halloween Trick or Treating Hours for Thursday, October 31st, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through G, as presented.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through G, as presented.
Support.
Okay, the motion endless support? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And items removed from consent agenda, we have none, so moving on to item 10A under financial business, we have expenditures including payroll for $503,453.13. We have a motion to approve the expenditures including payroll in that amount of $503,453.13.
Make a motion, we approve expenditures including payroll for $503,453.13. Support.
Okay, any discussion?
Nice work, Katie.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10B, the preliminary financial statements for September 2024. They have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements for September of 2024.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On to 10C, Blue Care Network Medicare Increase. City Manager.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Katie to walk us through this, because it's just a little bit complicated, and she's gonna go over a few things for you.
Well, do I exclude myself from this one? Seeing I'm...
Commissioner Clausen, you don't have to recuse yourself, which is a different issue, but as I've indicated to you, it would be my suggestion that you abstain from voting on this because you have a direct financial implication from the vote. But recusal, no, abstain, I would recommend you consider that.
Okay.
All right, so just a little overview on how the insurance works, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but we do have three different plans-ish, the pre-65 for retirees and the post-65 for retirees. This is just for the post-65 portion. It covers about 19 retirees and their spouses or families, and it's the Medicare side. So it was kind of thrown on us this week, last minute, that Blue Care Network had thrown out rates based on some legislation change, that out-of-pocket caps cannot be any higher than $2,000 at this point. So it used to be 8,000, now 2,000. That's a, you know, a countrywide thing, it's not something that a state's regulating or Blue Care is not regulating, they just have to follow the law. So what this did is, if we keep everything the same for our retirees as it is now, with a 2,000 out-of-pocket max and co-pays of $5, $5.30, and 30, the cost to the city will actually go up 46.9%. So, monthly, that change would be about $2,894.93, with an annual change of about just under $35,000 a year, just for those 19 employees. Like I said, the cap's changing, so we're forced to move our cap down, we have no choice. So, we kind of talked a little bit, went back to Dennis with Ascend, who does our insurance, and he was able to find an option two for us. So I did throw out two options for you, keep everything the same, increase the cost, or we actually go up for copay costs, $7, $7.40, and 40, which would increase it $2, $2.10, and 10 for in-network, out-of-network, generic, non-genetic prescriptions. So, that would increase the cost about $1,252.31 a month, or $15,027.72 a year. It's more cost to the retiree, obviously with prescriptions, but their out-of-pocket cap is reducing greatly. So if it is somebody with a lot of prescriptions, once they hit that 2,000, their out-of-pocket is reducing a lot.
Katie, I don't want to throw you under the bus here.
Yep.
But I just remembered a question I wanted to add previously, so I'm gonna throw it out there.
Yep.
Do you have the data that tells us the percentage of what the 19 retirees are taking, that are they more in the 5-5 area, the smaller prescriptions that are covered more, or are there substantial amount that are in the $10 increase area?
We don't get a report on what people take. I think just from generically hearing, most people try to reduce their costs as much as possible, go generic, go 90 days, you know, with their prescriptions to get that lower cost if possible. So... I guess no matter what, the city is out some money, but it's also an obligation we have and a decision we have to make, and unfortunately, it has to be done timely because Blue Care Network requires an answer within the next week or so, and everything will go into effect January 1st.
So then the option two, they'll have a little bit more just initially out-of-pocket, but they'll meet that cap sooner.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll kind of balance out, but they just won't see the balance till a little bit later down the road with the cap.
Right. And for somebody who maybe doesn't have a lot of prescriptions, there won't be any change. You know, it's really for the person who has a lot of prescriptions.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve option two or B, the approximately $15,000 annual increase with the associated copay expenditures.
Support.
Okay, now we can discuss. So, yeah, as you mentioned, this was a federal mandate, right, that, you know, the out-of-pocket costs be reduced from 8,000 to 2,000, but still really the insurance company's option to go, well, we want to still make our money, so, you know, we're gonna do this, so I just feel that that's worth mentioning. But, yeah, you know, healthcare increases in cost and is a, you know, very costly thing to begin with, so I guess this is not entirely surprising, but I really appreciate you doing all that legwork to, you know, try and get us balanced to something that's more reasonable. And like you mentioned, I mean, effectively, any of those employees could save six grand, you know, if they had a costly procedure.
Yep.
Right.
That actually is huge for the individual.
Mm-hmm.
So that's personally why I went with, okay, it's a little bit more, you know, out-of-pocket for some of the co-pays, but it wasn't, you know, it wasn't an amount that I would perceive to really break the bank on the average budget.
Right.
However, I do, you know, empathize with that.
Right.
I'm just saying, in the long run, any of our employees that are at that age will get a benefit of, if they needed some expensive medical thing, $6,000 in savings, so that's pretty huge.
We looked at the option of, we talked about this at length, because the last thing you want to do is something that impacts retirees that are on a fixed income.
Very true.
Some of them have retired a significant amount of time ago, so we looked at, you know, and part of the problem is the data, you know, if we paid the $2 increase and then went, you know, where would that, but you can't tell, because you just don't know, you know, medications change and you can take an average, but our concern is that we would be at a greater financial peril as a city in terms of the unknown, and we thought there was a better benefit for the retiree in terms of the lower deductible with us picking up the cost on option two. Yes, it's $15,000 more, but that is also an obligation that we have to our retirees. So we felt it was something, it's a number that we can budget for and we can deal with, and then as Bob indicated, that difference in the deductible for a number of people will be significant, and we would hope that it would be a wash in the best of scenarios, let's say that.
Yeah.
I guess the only other question that I'd have to benefit the public would be, did we also shop around other insurances to see if they might have a lower increase, or is that, we might not even be at a point in the year to do that, although I know it is open enrollment generally for vast majority of insurance takers.
Yeah, so with, we have an active side, a retiree side, pre-65, and then a post-65, so we end up having Blue Cross for two sides of insurance, and then ECN for this 19 with Medicare as a supplement. We did have meetings last year, Scott and I sat down with some meetings, and we were also at kind of a crossroads where we don't have the, it seems like 19, but we don't have the number of people enrolled to get us a real, like, discounted rate. We're not a large city, we're not, you know, so even if you throw the retirees together that are pre-65 with the active employees, I mean, we're looking at like under 40 people.
Yeah.
And it just becomes...
The pool.
Coverage period is, ends up being difficult, right? I just wanted to sort of air this for, you know, that you guys did do your homework, and we are in a situation that presents us as a small city with some difficulties. I guess the only thing I could suggest potentially for the future is like, could we maybe go in on some sort of countywide program, you know, is that something that maybe at a county level, they could investigate to benefit all of us? I'm not suggesting necessarily that this is something our administration needs to look into, other than perhaps putting out a feeler, but, you know, that...
You mean join a larger pool?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
To a countywide pool.
That's interesting, we could look at that.
You know, and same, you know, we have this my deal, right, for the state embarks on to get smaller municipalities and things like that, good deals and buying power on things, you know, is that, is there something at a state level that we might be able to benefit from?
Good point.
I am not saying like, you know, go undertake this, but, you know, maybe put a feeler out if that's something that might be appropriate to save us money, and I'm sure we're not the only municipality feeling this hurt, so, and I'm so sorry.
Oh, you're fine. No, you're fine. You brought up a lot of good points. I like the idea of jumping to a larger pool, I'm also nervous, it's, we, there is a slight track record in the county at this end to kind of be left out at certain conversations, and we could easily leave our retirees and workers in a bit of a lurch on decision-making process, what their health insurance is gonna look like, and as an employer, I think we do have to consider what that, our role would be in such a conversation, it's not a bad idea. Couple of points of clarification, questions if any of you don't mind, with either option one or option two here, the 46.9% to the city, or the 21.5% in the city, regardless for our retirees, they're getting that $2,000 per year cap, like, that's happened, we're not picking between that here.
Right.
The question is, does the increased cost just completely come to us, or are we sharing it with the 19 retirees? Is that fair to...
Correct.
And in the calculation on Blue Care Network's side, to be able to offer us the 21.5% increase instead of the 46.9%, are they expecting to make up that roughly 25% from the prescriptions? Assuming they have that data of our retirees, how much prescriptions are they getting? I mean, is that like $15,000 they're expecting to squeeze these workers for, or these retirees for?
That's hard for us to tell, I mean, that's the problem, is we don't have the data, and they have that data, they can...
That's probably covered by HIPAA.
I was gonna say, yeah, they're probably not allowed to give it either.
So...
But they have it.
Yeah.
Right, and that's undoubtedly gonna affect the way that they're doing this math, and that's...
Absolutely.
And I can appreciate the city's budget here, I'm also worried about their budget. Have we had any sort of feelers or discussion with any of the retirees on this?
No, not at this point, and it's unfortunate that it would have to be rolled out. They actually wanted us to sign this immediately and make a decision, and I said, there's no way that we're going to do that, we're gonna bring it back to commission and discuss it. So we're already kind of behind the eight ball. We can prepare an information seat and then hold a meeting for the retirees who would like to come, and explain to them what happened and what the options are, and try to negate any concerns, and if possible, we'll see if there's a Blue Cross rep that can be present. You know, it's nothing, it's something you never want to drop on a retiree, and I understand that, and yes, we're sharing the cost, the thing is, there's no, don't worry, the Blue Cross CEO won't have to park his plane, he'll be okay.
Yep.
And this whole deal, but it's unfortunate that the retirees and the cities are the ones that are squeezed on this to such an extent that you're not left many options here, you're really 21% or 46%.
Two choices.
Yeah, and then this is, I'm telling you, this is just the start. This is the first phase, and there'll be a second phase down the road, so it'll probably be important for us to shop this all again, as you have requested.
My only request for this would be then, as we move forward and discuss with the retirees, bring them in, explain what's going on. If this is putting them in a serious bind, that we, it needs to come back to this body for us to try and figure out an alternative solution down the road. We're making a decision without their input, I'm uncomfortable with that, I understand why we have to do it, but there has to be some dialogue here with them at some point.
We do have our retiree healthcare board quarterly, and all the retirees are welcome to come, and we can present it then, too, and give them some input on it then.
I can amend my motion that we, you know, take option B, but also request feedback from the next quarterly healthcare board meeting.
I'll support again.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yeah, before we do that, Bill, I may have made a case in assumption, you only have to abstain if you're over 65.
Wait a minute, you can't say age. Okay.
He can't, but you could.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to item 10D, the 2024 Recreation Millage Distribution. Did you want, anybody want to talk about that at all?
I just figured I would stay.
Yeah, go ahead. Please do so.
Yeah, so each year, in order to read, receive our Parks and Recreation Millage Distribution from the county, for the Parks and Rec Millage, they collect, they require us to fill out a form to get it with our previous year, you know, audited numbers on our recreation funding, so this distribution form has to be approved every year, so it's attached on here, and that is what we're looking for approval on.
I'll make a motion, we approve the St. Clair County Parks and Recreation Commission 2024 request for local millage distribution.
Support.
Any other discussion?
I have a brief question on this one, the, on the Parks and Recreation Commission 2024 request for local millage distribution, brief breakdown of the budget, there is seven, the net total is a negative, right, if I'm reading that correctly? Where is that, is that coming out of our general fund?
Yes, yep, Parks and Rec funds come out of our general fund.
That was all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And on to 10E, the C3 equipment invoice for $27,200. Can I have a motion to approve the invoice for C3 equipment in that amount?
Make a motion to approve the C3 equipment invoice for $27,200.
Support.
And now, any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11A, under unfinished business, Historical Commission 300 Broadway Report, deadline discussion. And City Manager, if you'd like to start that?
Yes, Jason has provided an extensive amount of background data, so that we were all on the same page in terms to what Commissioner Bryson was looking for in his motion. What I'll start, and maybe this will help start that process as we work through it, I have a walkthrough with AEW engineers scheduled for November 1st, so we're moving forward, we'll walk the facility, we'll discuss the scope of what our expectations are, and then they'll provide me a RFQ or an RP in terms of billable hours in order to achieve the outcome there, and then the plan would be for me to bring that back to the board and say, this is what it's gonna cost for the engineers to go in and conduct their portion of the business that they need in order to facilitate you folks making a decision. So we're moving that process forward, I'd be happy to answer other questions, but I think that's what you were looking for, is there gonna be some movement towards there, and then as you saw in the materials that were provided, Jason did a good job in going back over the history of it and where we were at and those type things.
I mean, if we're at a point of discussion, I can just tell you that the outcome of the last Historical Commission meeting, you know, we went through this at length, and again, the feedback that I keep getting from the people on the 300 Broadway Committee that have taken on the task of doing the business plan, is that they are really at a stopping point, and then until they understand what is or isn't feasible in terms of, you know, being able to propose things, even for accessibility, refinishing, et cetera. So, to that end, what we had discussed, and this is speaking a little bit for the 300 Broadway Committee, but it was discussed at the Historical Commission meeting, was that we felt that we could do, now, the committee meets monthly, and the, if we could have a November 1st walkthrough, and then a quotation, then from the basic meeting with the members who are able to, or who have been tasked with putting together the business plan, two meetings from that point, we feel that we could, should be able to have a good business plan put together. And it was further discussed with Scott, that he had a pro forma sort of foray, you have no money, you have some money, and you, you know, it's Christmas, type of plan to go forward with that would, I think, help those tasked with putting the business plan together immensely. So, you know, I do apologize on behalf of the 300 Broadway Committee and Historical Commission, that, you know, it has taken this long to do this, but as I mentioned at the prior meetings, you know, we had two grants yanked out from under us, and, you know, when money was no object, it was very easy to have a plan, but when money is, you know, very much a factor, and you have one group, you know, who was a principal fundraiser for the building, you know, void of their 501(c)(3) status, it does become very difficult to, you know, be able to understand what you have to work with to proceed forward. So, again, I hope that those, I don't want to call them excuses, but those factors are taken into consideration. I do appreciate that the board is forthright in keeping that committee honest in its charge, and, you know, but that is the status that, as of this point, I really appreciate, Mike, for volunteering to look into this with AEW, and is it possible to be a part of that walkthrough?
I would prefer that you weren't, only so that, at this point, they're gonna have three people there, I want to make sure that the scope is not so broad that we come back and say, sure, for a price of $800,000, we'll be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, I'm trying to keep, based on what you gave me, I'm trying to keep that scope tight in terms of what you're looking to utilize that building for, so the ground floor, the teen center, if you will, the garage area, ADA accessibility, restroom accessibility.
The four-point plan.
Those type things, yeah, and then the second phase, if you would, would be, okay, maybe another area, then the third phase would be the Opera House, if that's what the name is. I just don't, I don't know how long they'll take, they'll give us a quote, the walkthrough, one guy seems to be familiar with the building, and then how long it'll take them to come up to quote, but as soon as they have it, I'll bring it back to you, and I'll even see if they'll come here, if you'd like to ask questions, you know, have them present the report, and then you'll have a decision to make.
So, just to, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, when they go through the building, they're looking to say, here's the current condition for each of these spaces, here are the current limitations for each of these spaces, here's what it would take to allow occupancy if it's not already allowed, but this isn't a full-blown turning them loose to engineering, a whole bunch of stuff, before we make a decision as to what we want.
It is...
That's not actually what it is at all, it's only to quote what it would take to put that together.
Put that together.
That, I just wanted to make sure that what they're looking at quoting isn't some big, huge thing, and it's just kind of narrowed down to what it is and what it would take roughly to get, bring it up to, for occupancy.
What I envision, and I know we have a number, I'm sorry, Mayor, I apologize.
Oh, no, just from just the narrow breakdowns of this point to this point to this point, not like the grand total altogether.
And again, it's just to quote, looking at that. That's very, very important distinction, I think.
Yeah, so, as an example, in the phases, à la carte, this is for this area here, if this is all you wanted, this is it, and if you wanted to look at this area here, these are more billable hours, and this is what it would take, and then if you wanted the whole building and everything, that's the total, and then we can kind of pick, or you can pick, okay, no, I want just the areas that it's confined to and nothing else, and what it takes to achieve that, that's how I foresaw it to be layered, and I want to make, I'm writing this down to make sure that I understand exactly what you want, and then make sure that I relay it correctly to the years, so, because, you know, they'll go, as grand as you allow them... So, because, you know, they'll go as grand as you allow them to go.
I guess, so, I mean, we've had several plans put in place. We've paid for several plans for this building. So those are all out, I'm assuming?
So we have those. They're very old numbers, and they are also.
I'm talking to planned use, though. The planned use is totally, the last set of plans was for moving city offices back in there. I haven't seen any other plans brought back to this board since on anything else.
My, my understanding of seeing the Historical Commission, I wasn't on there, but I was witness, so we've got a hierarchy of boards here, City Commission, Historical Commission, 300 Broadway. And we're having a communication error because down here at 300 Broadway, they're uncomfortable laying out the plan of use. And I know you're saying that there's older plans, but where it's at now and what they're proposing to do with it without knowing what the cost would be and what that's going to look like. Now, since there are older plans, I think the building's state has changed, is my understanding. I've never really been in, other than in the teen zone in years. So I can't state to that. And I think that that has to be assessed before we could even judge if those old plans are even viable to some extent, right?
But certainly, moving city offices back into them is not what would, what would be planned. And to my understanding, there have been plans, at least at the Friends of City Hall level, that perhaps were not presented to this board, as for approval, anyway. However, there, a build off of that is what probably would be presented. But one thing I know about the plans at present is that flexibility would be key, you know, really flexible areas such that they could be used for virtually anything, from, you know, the citizens to organizations to other things.
Correct.
So the process has always been for this building, because I've been around it the longest probably, is that all those boards are strictly, they have no authority to make any decisions, okay? So when they finally were going to get any type of plans, they have to be brought here. We have to approve that first before we can even move forward, in my opinion, to do that. We've never done that. I mean, this has been kind of a mess for a few years. And like I said, the last set of plans I saw was putting the offices back in. I know that's out. But a lot of the interior was worked on without the approval of this board. A lot of things were removed from the building without the approval of this board or anything brought to this board. So I'm, I'm supportive of that it's going to go in the right direction, but there's a lot of things that have been kind of a mess in the past. And I'm, I know we probably can't get all of the items that were removed from that building that belonged to the city. I'm assuming that's probably all gone, which is a shame. There was a lot of historic information in there, so I don't know what happened to all that. But, so, the thing now is, is kind of what is the plan that you're going to have them look at?
So just to clarify a few things.
Just to drywall, just to put in electrical, just to put in ADA compliance? Is that basically, just the bare minimum of?
Well, in, in the, in the agenda is sort of a lot of what was outlined in that plan.
Well, it still doesn't give me a plan, doesn't show me anything.
Well, but accessibility, you know, a point where the, where it could be utilized.
Yeah.
So I, I think part of what's missing here in.
Does that mean an elevator? Does that mean a ramp again, like we used to have in the back? Does that, what does that mean?
Accessible, exactly. So, so you're, well, firstly, let me go back.
Okay.
I'd say the past few years, nothing has been removed from the building, at least since 300 Broadway has, has sort of been in, the 300 Broadway Committee has been in existence. Yes, I will agree that when, you know, Friends of City Hall was specifically leasing the building, that things had been rearranged and, you know, Friends of City Hall certainly treated it as their building. I'm not going to point blame or anything there, I'm just saying that they, they were leasing it and treated it as such. In speaking with some of the members, I don't think that anything is completely gone or missing or anything else. There was, I mean, there's some windows that are in the basement, because this had actually been challenged at a meeting, and basically, people came up with all of the items that were supposedly missing. So, that I'm aware of, if we talked to the right people, those could be, you know, placed back. And I know that if there was a concerted effort to, you know, get the building back into shape, that these people would be more than willing to put that forward. So, again, the accessibility is what is key here. And we hope that the engineering firm could provide us with, because they're always, every time we ask about accessibility, you'll get many different answers, and that's what we're hoping the engineering firm can flush out for us. Because if you talk to one person, you know, they only wanted this architect that had done a lot of the previous work, you know, they were saying, this building deserves a very nice elevator, and that's the only thing that I'll propose, you know? Whereas, I think another engineering firm might say, if you just want the minimums, here's what it is, and it will cost this much lesser amount. Then, as, you know, the building becomes more accessible, interest is garnered in it, then, you know, we could propose another tiered approach that, you know, for the future, we might envision this that would make it even more historically significant or useful, let's say. So that is what we're after as a committee, you know? Again, the, what's the cheapest possible way to make it accessible? You know, put drywall back on the walls, or, I mean, raw brick is a suitable internal material. You know, that actually has some character and charm to it. So, again, what is the minimal cost to get us back into a usable state and accessible? And, you know, in these phases that are listed on page 153 of our packet, how can that be set forth? And again, all that we're asking the engineering company to do is quote, putting that together, not, you know, doing the, you know, downtown job of what, what would we do to pick one of these things, but just what would it cost to actually put that together?
But they might be able, are they going to be able to come up with varying alternatives? I mean, are you just looking for one cheap, or are you looking for different versions to see what you can choose from?
Mr. Reeves, is that possible to ask AEW to offer alternatives for different phases that they're looking at?
Yeah, anything's possible to ask for.
I know. But then I'm worried about the cost.
Right.
We are best versed in drywall.
I have questions about that, and I'd like to get there in a moment, questions about the cost of the process. I want to agree on the process first. And, and I, I think, Commissioner Hendrick, to your concern about this body overseeing the plan and actually making the decisions is absolutely valid, and I believe that's agreed upon of all the players in the process. And that, once we get the engineering options of what it would take to complete the various phases as presented, the plan will come to us for deliberation in order to carry out and going back and forth that way. So, does this walkthrough have a cost associated, right?
Yes, I'm sure I will be billed for the two engineers, myself, time, and Scott's time.
I can, I can quote it, but I'm not going to quote it. When I was a building inspector here, ADA came into effect, and we were pushing it with City Hall. I had a company come in and put a ramp on that building for ADA compliance. The first thing they did when they rented, when they leased the building, was take the ADA ramp off.
Again, that was prior to 300 Broadway Committee being in existence, and I.
Well, there, there is a lot of historical mismanagement. That's very valid.
Exactly. So, so the issue is, is trying to get all that, because I'm going back even more years than what you're even talking, Brian. I mean, I'm going back to when they moved out of the building, and then they brought in dumpsters, and they were going through that, I mean, it was a mess.
Oh, that's terrible.
So, all I'm saying is, I get this, but I don't want to spend a ton of money on an engineering thing, and then we come back and we say, well, we don't really like that, we want to do this. You know what I'm saying? Then we got to spend more money. Because we've already spent numerous times already, we've spent money on engineering firms to give us a thing and give us a floor plan.
So we, the board has, or the?
The board, yeah. I've been involved in a couple times it's come through here, even going back as far as when John Gaber was here.
Okay.
There was the plan, and that was when they wanted to put the offices back in, and we had to approve that plan, and then they had the engineering give you a quote. So all I'm saying is, I just want to make sure we get this done, and it's done, so that we're not doing it over and over and over, because we've already spent, the city's already spent over the years a lot of money in engineering plans and everything else. I'm just trying to make sure this is it.
So in each of these phases, you want multiple options on each of these phases?
Well, I'm not saying multiple options, but if they give us one option and it's really expensive, is there another option that could come in different, more economical?
Certainly, every phase, I would request a cheapest possible option, every phase.
So you're talking electrical, plumbing, drywall?
Yeah, again, just.
The basics.
Being accessible and meeting code.
Lighting.
That's what I'm talking, that's the base level. It meets code and it makes the building accessible. That's like phase one. For each of these phases, or, I guess, component one of each of these phases, we've already used the phase nomenclature. And then a, you know, more, more, slightly more lavish, you know? But really, you know, I think this group is most interested in just getting, and a more lavish one would be if we get grant funding, you know, to do this. And, again, everything is stipulated upon, or rather, funding from grants frequently has multiple stipulations behind it. If it's a historical grant, we may need to, you know, utilize very historic fixtures and things like this. However, the grant would presumably fund part of that, so.
If I may, Commissioner Ross, I think we have to acknowledge the historical missteps that have been done with this building, that that's been a long problem.
Acknowledge.
I think we also have to acknowledge that there are different people involved now in a different structure. And, Mr. Reeves, if you're taking any notes out of this, I think the biggest one is that we can't let this fall to the wayside again.
Well, it won't, because I've already had it scheduled, and so I'm on it already.
I mean, that is.
I mean, that's what you got done and.
Yeah.
So, if I could just, two seconds. In this historical mis, historic mismanagement, a lot of it has been a disinterest of the board to save the building. And I think that this board, generally speaking, is on board with saving it at, at this juncture.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's technically true. The issue has always been, we went through some really tough times, there wasn't any money.
That's valid.
So, it is a beautiful building, but if you don't have the money for it, and if you can't get the money for it, the other option you're going to have to, I think, eventually has to be thought of. What happens if we don't? We've already gone through 20 years, and we're still sitting here talking about the same thing that, I mean, I've been on the board 14 of those years, and I'm still looking at the same thing over and over and over. So, I guess I want to see, this is great, but if we can't find the money and we can't do it, is there another plan? What are we going to do?
Well.
Because the building is still going to be sitting there.
Commissioner Ross did speak to that. The three-tiered plan as proposed by Scott, so that you have a zero budget, where you have no options to make the building functional, what are you going to do? You have a little bit of budget, whether it's coming from grant, or city, or some mixture of funds therein, and your Christmas bonus plan, where you have much more of your funds available than you expected. And when, when 300 Broadway gives us this plan, they need to show us at each of those tiers of funding, ideally, where it's going to be going. And so if there's no funds available, we need an option.
Yeah.
I agree. And I think you're right about that.
Well, we've been, we've been talking about it for 20 years, and so.
But, so, let me ask.
That's why I'm saying we need a plan.
And I'm newer to the discourse on a lot of levels here, but for those 20 years, how many of those years have you had a historian involved?
They've had it ever since this thing started. I mean, they did the big book, I gave, oh, I think he's got it right now. But they have a whole book and the whole thing from the Smith Group way back when they moved out of here. And we got the first grant when they did the outside.
Sure.
Okay, so.
What I'm getting at is, with the historians involved in this project already, we've moved considerably towards like CLG status, the SHPO process, grant funding comes available for them, like 42 competitors. It's a significant change already in the process that we're reaching. And so I, I think the concerns are valid, but I think they're also being met.
Yes. But, again, it still comes to the money.
Well, and, but, but we have to know what the costs are going to be.
Correct. Because the costs are the old, original costs from old.
The grants, the grants have changed, the way they looked at it. When we started that building and I did the ramp and stuff, there was a state law that said, if it was your building, it was up to you to make, there was no grants available. It's changed now, there's grants opening up and stuff. But back then, maintenance of your building was your cost, that you couldn't get a grant.
Yeah. And, I mean, we still have to deal with the exterior, so I'm still concerned about that, because that's, you know, that was a big cost. And, and I mean, it was worked on, I mean, we spent, what, a million and a quarter on that exterior, but that was a long time ago. And, I mean, there's going to be things that are going to have to be done again to the exterior on top of.
Of course.
The interior.
Sure. And, I mean, as a city asset, though, we, you know, we budget that we rarely spend, but we budget 50,000 every year, which probably should increase with inflation, for, you know, the maintenance of our city's building assets. And, again, rarely has that gotten spent, and it, we budgeted for it, we should use it, we should not kick the can. And I, again, I understand that times have been tough before, and can kicking was necessary to, you know, get the city to move forward. But in a time when we, you know, do have the money, it is prudent to obviously do those things which would make your facilities last a significant amount longer.
Well, you have the money to a point, but you also have more infrastructure that we're still going to be having to deal with, our whole wastewater plant is going to be a serious issue, so I wouldn't count on.
That's covered a lot by the grant.
No, it's not covered by the water grant.
Well, I think, Mr.
The wastewater treatment plant is not covered under that. I asked Scott that, as far as I know.
It is not.
Do you think you have a clear, clear concept of where you're going to go with the engineers? Because I think, once we get those prices, then we can start talking more about the monies, where we're going to get funds.
Yes. Basically, what I'm going to ask for is a study, give me what it would cost to perform a study for accessibility and to bring the building up to code for ADD accessibility. And it'll be in layers, for the youth center, garage area, whatever you call it, general meeting area, this area here for use. If we wanted to use a second floor or a stairied area, how much would you charge us in billable hours to do that study for that area? The third study would be for the top area, to do a study to check structural and all that. So they're just going to give us a number that says, if you want just the bottom area and the garage and the youth center and ADA accessibility and certificate of speed, it's up to codes, X amount of dollars to come in and do the study. Then you got to determine if you want the study done.
All right. So let me add to that study, that you have them look at the exterior again, for the roof and everything else, to make sure that that's not going to be an additional cost on top of all that, because it hasn't been looked at. Like I said, the last time that roof was done was when Mike Niggy was here, so that was two or three city managers ago, and that's been a long time. So, and I can't even imagine what that roof's going to cost this time. That was an insurance job that time, we had a wind damage or something, and we were able to get it covered under that. But it's not going to be the same this time. And that's my concern, is we still have to worry about the exterior just as much as the interior.
So that'll be the fourth phase of it. How much would you charge us, charge us to do an exterior and roof study?
Correct.
Am I getting it?
Yeah.
You're looking for just a quote, right?
Just a quote.
Just a quote. So we should go, I know we're, we're driving us down, but basically, our city manager wants to go get quotes for, but not to do it.
No.
Not to do it. Just to see what it would cost.
So we need, we need to go on, instead of talking about the old stuff and what's going on, and you did what?
True.
And give the city manager his chance to show us.
But I want to make sure we cover everything this time.
There's no misunderstanding.
One, one brief footnote for, as we move forward, is it the Historical Commission? No, the Historical Society that is intending to do fundraising for external repairs?
They're doing fundraising for maintenance repairs in general. So should the building ever need, say, a new HVAC system?
I don't think they limit it to the exterior.
They did not at all.
I, I, that was my mistake. Thank you for clarifying.
Big-ticket items, that's what they're doing, their endowment fund, which, you know, again, should be a repeating, recurring, you know, it's like drawing from your retirement savings. That's what an endowment amounts to.
We'll need an accountable of the resources available when we have that conference.
But we might as well do that cost at the same time we're doing all the other costs.
Yep.
So, I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Are we going to call the vote?
Yeah, right now.
Well, I was going to make a motion that we permit the city manager to meet with AEW to have quoted. to have quoted costs to, what would you call it, analyze the 300 Broadway building for a Phase 1 teen zone accessibility at minimal cost, a Phase 2 expanded teen zone area, there's a larger area that's around that, that's unfinished, at minimal cost, a Phase 3 accessibility to the entire first floor at minimal cost, and at historically accurate cost, I'll call it, and maybe if those two are broken out, a Phase 4 opera house accessibility at minimal cost and at historically correct cost. And finally, a fifth phase on the exterior of the building, what would it take to get that to, you know, code and intactness?
I think that's the longest motion ever.
Clark, can you read back?
I got it all, oh, no, I got it all, I'll get it back to you.
I'm sorry, can I get that?
Good one, Brian. No, I got it all. I got you.
Yeah.
Support.
I think Jake actually had it.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, Jake.
One moment on that, though.
So you're going to just have that quoted, not to do it.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rurg?
Yes.
That motion carried.
All right, on to 12A, new business, authorization of purchase, one 2024 GMC Sierra 3500 truck for the DPW.
Right, would you like me to expand upon it or talk about it at all? I've got Aaron here as well.
Does it have the same engine as those Tahos?
It does not.
Okay.
Nope.
That's good. Just briefly, it is ARPA funds, right? Pre-approved ARPA funds?
Uh, you know-
Yeah.
I believe it is, yes. I'm sorry, I missed that.
The cover page would indicate it.
Yeah.
And it's through my deal.
Yeah, it is pre-bid through my-
So it's been pre-bid, you don't have to waive competitive bidding.
It's ARPA funds, except for $878. Okay.
And does this replace something, or this is just, is there something?
There was always, oh, here's my small paper, ready, printed out for, she just, maybe this might happen.
Thank you, Katie.
So there's always been allocated $50,000 for a DPW one ton truck.
Okay.
I don't know a lot about trucks, but I'm told a 3500 is a one ton? Yes, so, yes.
Close enough, yes.
Yes, close enough.
25, 35, 45, yeah, all one tons.
Okay, but I mean, you're replacing a vehicle in your fleet, or just addition?
The 18 will slide down and replace the one that Superintendent Ames drove.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's a minute ago.
2,000.
Well, okay.
All right, there's 22, they can drink already.
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of the 2024 GMC Sierra 3500 pickup through Michigan IDL for $49,902.
Support.
Mayor, if I can?
Yeah.
There's a correction on that, because of the pricing there, the actual amount is $50,878.
I will amend my motion to that value.
And I'll support that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can I get roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, 12B, the snowplow purchase for the DPW. And I believe on this, I'm going to need the motion to waive a competitive bid if we do that, and then for the purchase of the STE that we've been presented.
I'll make a motion, we waive competitive bidding for the snowplow purchase.
Support.
Motion to support, any other discussion?
Just, just for the public's sake here, there are three options of having shopped this around and found, so while waiving the competitive bid, there, this has been looked at for a few, you know, different deals and best offer.
Can I get roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion that we approve the quote from STE in the amount of $8,762.60 for the snowplow.
Okay, motion to support, any other discussion? Can I get roll call, please?
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And to 12C, for approval of knock boxes.
We're asking the commission to approve a total of four knock boxes at city facilities. Just so you're aware, we require all businesses to have block, excuse me, knock boxes, and we shouldn't be any different than the businesses, and it does hopefully save us door glass and other things that the fire department has to get in.
I'll make a motion that we approve the four knock box black boxes, the amount of $2,374.
Support. So, and for the benefit of the public, these are boxes that the fire department, police department can access, only they have access to them, and then allows them access to the facility such that they could take care of an alarm, a fire, and any concern that may be called in, reported, sent straight to them via an alarm, et cetera.
They can get in the door.
Yeah, they can get in, right, get in the door instead of smashing a window, et cetera.
And this is ARPA funds too, correct?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Okay, so this is coming out of ARPA.
It, since we're doing four of them, does this actually include 300 Broadway?
It does not, I believe, at this point.
Okay, and I, it just, as a point of footnote, we've beaten that horse to death tonight, but if we do something like this on 300 Broadway, we just need to double-check on historical compliance and all that too, as we figure it out. Don't have to worry about it, it's not for 300 Broadway tonight.
Any other discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And to 12D, the AED purchase.
Now, this one's near and dear to my heart. We're asking for the purchase of three Heart Start Philip AEDs and the AD cabinet under our program that Jason has championed using ARPA funds. You know, we have a lot of different visitors that come into these, our buildings, and besides that, the employees, and employees sometimes deal in some unusual circumstances where if they had a medical issue, although the FD and EMS are close by, having an AED to immediately start, these are the type that lead you right through the process, they're not the old type where you'd hook it up to the car battery and say, "Charge." These here actually walk you through the process and tell you, yes, apply or don't apply, those type of things, so it's, it really is a good thing for the community to have, Mayor.
I'll make a motion that we approve the three Heart Starts by Philip AEDs and the three cabinets with alarms for a total of $3,625.77.
Support.
Any other discussion?
Those are also a lot of ARPA funds, if you don't mind.
Yes.
As was mentioned, these things really are amazing, our church has one and does an annual kind of education on it, yeah, it's up on the screen there for everybody to see, but they're really impressive. You just open it up, push start, and it talks to you the entire time, walks you through it, how to apply the electrodes to the patient's chest and everything else, and it, they're very impressive, and again, are, it's an impressive amount of time, could have saved a person's life, was one nearby, so, very good addition.
Madam Mayor, if I may too?
Absolutely.
This is a grant buy-down program, it's not a direct grant to the city for full purchase, unfortunately, but it was all the research I could find, so you can see in that, the attachment, I think we save about $400 on the Phillips Heart Smart, and I did confirm with Chief Slangster what brand, he said it didn't matter, everything would be compatible, and the Phillips is the, I think, most widely-used brand, so that's the one we chose to go with.
Very nice. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rurg?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12E, which is 1276 South Bell River Road.
You've had your package, some extensive information on the history of 1276 South Bell River, and hopefully, a number of you've had an opportunity to actually drive by the property and visit it and see the condition is. This has been a long-term blight issue, amongst some other issues to be candid at that location. Today, I visited that location and met with the owners, and looked at the yard and walked the yard, I did not go into the house, but out of that conversation, they, I don't know that they had a clear understanding of how the blight process or code enforcement's process works. They did indicate to me they felt that the communication has been poor, that at times, letters that they were supposed to receive, they may not have received, or were delivered to a wrong address. A lot of it is their understanding of what is blight, it may be different than the code enforcement people or our understanding of blight. They may collect it and say, this will be great for my resale shop that I'm going to run in my backyard, but I may not sell it for three years, so I can just store it there. And then when you do that multiple times, other people may say, well, that's actually blight, you're not going to open a resale store there, and you have a bunch of items. Long story short, they're indicating to me that they have sold the property, they're to be out by the 8th of November, that there's a gentleman that's purchased two homes on that street, there isn't another one, a house down, and he's negotiating to buy another one. So, based upon that, and they're supposed to furnish me, and I didn't check my email yet, the buyer's agreement, the signed buyer's agreement is showing me that the property has been sold, and that there's an attempt to have somebody take over. I asked them if there was their intention to leave a good majority of the stuff there, and they said, no, they were going to try to load it into their van and move it, they have a location, and move it a little bit at a time. The size and shape of some of the items, they won't be able to do that. So, long story short, I'm going to ask that you table this or revisit this at a later meeting, and give me an opportunity to work with this family, to verify first that this is happening, and then also, if it doesn't, to allow me to employ a couple different options in terms of negating the blight there with, with the family's insistence, if you will. And I don't want to go into great detail, but I have a couple ideas that I think we could put forth, at least start the process. I am really hopeful that what they're telling me is true, and the property's bought, and the gentleman plans to clean them and leave the building standing until he decides whether he's going to bulldoze them or renovate them, so that's where we're at.
And that was the 8th of November that the closing date is, in theory?
That's what they're telling me in theory.
So, just, just so everyone's aware, at the Dangerous Buildings Board, they have over, you know, several meetings made a lot of promises, we will clean this up, we will clean this up, and a little bit gets cleaned up and then more gets added back. So, it, it's, they do have, or at least they have been instructed as to what needs to happen, and it never really does happen. But having said that, I mean, if this thing is in theory going to be sold here, I'm okay with, I'll make a motion that we table this until the second meeting in November.
Support.
At that point, it'll either be sold or not, and then we can figure out how to deal with it at that point.
Yeah, I believe they did find another house up, and I was at one of the meetings, and yes, she only wanted six days, and the year board gave them 30 days, so they had a lot of time to do it, and she knew, I mean, I had talked to her also, because that's why I attended the meeting, but it looks like they're moving across well, so I wish them well.
Now, in the event that they leave some of their material behind, for the unfortunate new homeowner to be facing that, how does the blight clock begin countdown and process?
Well, that's why I want the sale agreement prior to him taking control of the property, so I make him aware, and then there's the tax rules, you know, we have tools at our, at our hand that we can utilize, I'm hoping that he's cooperative. If he has plans for the property, the last thing he wants is to look, or stay in the condition it's in. And then if he's buying another house, and he hopes to, let's say he wants to rent that out, when they pull up and they see what's next door, that, you know, so I hope to talk to him and say, hey, look, we, we need some help here. There's a couple ways we can do that, we can clean it up and then send you the bill, or you can clean it up, and it's a lot cheaper if you clean it up than we clean it up. I mean, at the end of the day, the hope is not to penalize the family and to get the property clean, and they do have an understanding, they do make promises that they don't keep, I'm well aware of that, and I'm not betting everything I have on that eighth day yet, but there's, there's hope.
Yeah. Well, your predecessor seemed to approach these problems with a great deal of patience, that I think was good for our residents and citizens, and something I appreciated, and I appreciate you going out to the property directly, communicating and engaging in this process, and taking it so seriously, but, and stating too, that this isn't about penalizing them, there are reasons we have to clean this up, and I know we have to do what has to be done, but I'm glad that we can take a couple of steps first to try and work it out.
I mean, there's signs of significant road and issues and other issues, so it needs to be done.
Okay. Now, to table this, this one, do all in favor or we have to do roll call on it? Table it.
You don't have to do a roll call, you can-
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? On to 13 administrative reports, first we have, A, the city attorney report.
I'm good this evening, thank you.
All right, city manager report.
My reports can be really brief, because it's been a very busy week, and I will send you a written update on a number of different items, so that you're aware of some of the things I've been involved in over the week. If you don't mind, please.
All right.
Do we need to make a motion to not mind?
So moved.
I think we do a roll call on it.
Okay.
All right, on to C, reports from department heads, and we have several with us, assuming. Does anybody want to jump up and have at it?
I'm still typing Commissioner Ross's motion.
Hell of a motion.
Just wanted to give a little update, Drinking Water Project, the first dispersment has come in, so we are now fully reimbursed for some of those items that you approved in the past year for engineering costs, so-
Some or all?
It's a huge-
Some?
All.
All?
All, yes. Yep. Another thing is, you'll be seeing, when the audit happens this year, we, because of the Drinking Water Project, we're over that $750,000 threshold, there has to be a single audit done, just on the federal funds, so that wasn't in the agreement, that that was always a possibility, so this will be the first year, we were hoping that, because we didn't receive the money until after the fiscal year ended, that we would, but they're saying no, because you're reimbursing expenses from last year, single audits needed, so we'll probably be needing one of those the next few years because of the cost of the one of those the next few years because of the cost of the project. So just wanted to give a heads up on that.
Okay.
Yep. And then just a little stat, because I like statistics. As of today, 93% of our city operating summer taxes have been collected, so I think that's a huge number.
Good percentage.
It's a good percentage.
What was it again?
93%.
Good work.
Yeah.
I mean, don't thank me, thank the public for paying their taxes.
Yeah.
But it's very, very important for budgeting that we receive the funds that we hope, or hope for or budget for, so it's a good number.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Atkinson? No, good? All right.
Jason?
Yes, I do. One moment.
Still typing.
All right. A few updates here, my favorite topic is elections, so I'll get to that as the last part. First thing, I did, I was able to, in between everything else this week, finish setting up a social district page on our website. Our website is still a work in progress. I understand there's some broken links on there, we're working to get those fixed and available to the residents and visitors, but that social district page is up on our website. It is under the visitors tab, all the way at the bottom. The map is provided on there, the management and maintenance plan is provided on there with the amendment that you approved at your last meeting. Communication with the establishments that are participating in the social district to kind of bring them up to speed on the operating hours, the change in the logo, the new sticker process and everything, so we're hoping we can get that rolling. We have some events coming up, community events coming up, end of this month, rolling into November and December with, with the Merry Time Christmas and the parade and such, so I think this will be a success. We're getting more on board with the social district, still a couple downtown that are available to apply, and hopefully, we can get them on board now with that increase in hours and, and the success that other establishments are having with it. So that is available for residents to look at if they're confused on what the social district is or where the commons areas are. Working on getting some posters printed in large format of the map with our logo with a nice little QR code up in the corner that establishments can put in their windows. You'll be able to scan that QR code, takes you right to our webpage, gives you all the information you need, what our social district is and everything. So make as transparent as possible and try to eliminate those questions. Next, I want to remind everybody the Community Shred Day on Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Also coinciding with that is the School Supply Drive to benefit Bell River Elementary and Holy Cross Elementary. So bring your documents to shred, there is no limit. We have received some phone calls in the office asking, how much can we bring? Bring what you got. I've talked to the shredding company and he said he is prepared, he does these all the time. It's hard to gauge how busy you're going to be, but he said, bring what you got. If you've got a truckload, bring a truckload, and we'll, we'll get it going. So I myself will be there helping out. I know a few of you expressed your interest in volunteering for that as well, so I appreciate that. But it should be a good event, and bring your school supplies, so we can benefit those, those students at those schools. Yes?
Is there a list or anything of the most needed supplies?
Um, I don't know if it's on the flyer or not.
Yeah, it is.
Did I put it, okay. I know it was crayons, colored pencils, notebooks, the spiral notebooks, things like that, but yes.
Good to know.
Yeah, those were the most, the most needed.
Okay.
And that is at the fire department as well. They'll have, the shred company will bring signs indicating which way to go in, go out, it's all going to be out there and available, so they're, he's been great to work with and he's really excited, I'm really excited, so hopefully it's a success.
Is this just for Marine City citizens?
I mean, I would say yes, but I don't think we're going to check driver's licenses or anything like that, or proof of residency, yeah, so, I mean, that would be up to you as a commission, but I don't think we're going to limit it to.
That would probably be a federal law.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't want to do that either. So, no, I, I don't think it's limited to just city residents, but.
Great, that's a great service.
Yeah. Where did I want to go next? Public accuracy test, that was October 7th. Thank you, sir. October 7th, everything went well, Commissioner O'Brien was there along with myself, and we did have three elect, of my election inspectors and a spouse of one of them attend. It was great to finally see people there. This is my third one for the year, and we've always been lonely. Commissioner O'Brien, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it was nice to see people there and inquiring of election source who, who completed the testing. Some great questions were asked, we, we went through a couple scenarios with the tabulators to quell any rumors or concerns or conspiracy theories, if you will, and that was processed and put through, but all the programming is good, and we are, we are ready for Election Day on November 5th.
Great.
Leading into that, early voting starts October 26th and runs through November 3rd. That is from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM each day, right here in the Guide Community Center. And I just wanted to add this too, as we've received multiple phone calls this week, this is constitutionally mandated through the Michigan Constitution with the passing of proposal 22-2. So we've had questions of, are you guys doing early voting? Yes, it is required in any state or federal election, and we will be participating in it October 26th through November 3rd. I provided you all with an update today, and I was unaware of this until I talked to the Bureau of Elections today. I guess I'm behind the times and need to watch the news more, but the Secretary of State has launched a Michigan voter dashboard to provide some transparency with voting and registered voters, absentee ballots, all that good stuff. I, I had an opportunity to go through there today, kind of look at everything. It does update daily, I think I told you guys it updates live, but it updates every morning around 7:00 AM, so you'll see those updates on there. If you go to Michigan.gov/OS, and then go to the elections tab, results and data, and then you'll click on voter dashboard, and there's, there's some good information in there. I urge the public to check it out and see where our numbers are at countywide and municipality-wide. And with that, my last thing, because I love statistics too. Absentee voter ballots, as of 6:00 PM today, we have had 769 sent, 392 returned, so we are at 50.9% return rate on AV ballots issued.
Fantastic.
It's very high, that's great, I'm glad people are exercising their right to vote, and if these numbers have any indication, I, I think we're going to have a really high voter turnout on Election Day itself, so please take advantage of any of those early voting days too, if you want to avoid the lines, avoid being rushed at the polls to make your decisions with, with your candidates and races. And to add to that, I just want to make note too, we're averaging issuing seven absent voter ballots a day since our bulk mailing at the end of September. So it may not seem like a lot, but that means we're getting in seven applications per day of people who have not been an absent voter before, so that, I think that's a large number and worthy of noting.
Eight to four, right, for early voting?
8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, yes.
Yeah, because like East China's 7:30 to 3:30.
Yep.
So just.
Yeah, and we can have, everybody can have different hours, but ours are eight to four.
And I think I found that on the voter dashboard, just Googling it.
It is on there as well.
St. Clair County, Marine City voting, right, so anyway, pretty good, and yeah, thank you for all that.
If someone wants to see the ballot ahead of time, is there a webpage or anything?
Yes, so we have sample ballots posted in the lobby here, posted on the board outside the door, posted in the lobby of city offices. We have smaller copies available if anybody wants to come and get those, and if you go to the Michigan Voter Information Center, MVIC, if you just Google that, you'll be able to see a sample ballot for your jurisdiction, clerk's hours, address, and I think Commissioner Ross alluded to that as well, you can find the early voting information on there, it's a great site as well.
Great.
For the absentee ballots to be counted, you need them by Election Day?
8:00 PM on Election Day, yes. Yes.
Mr. Reed?
If Jason's done.
That was it, sir.
No, that's excellent.
You gave me your time, I think, correct?
I, I did have one item that I wanted to say, and I just wanted to thank the department heads. They have been an amazing group, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure they, they weren't sure what kind of ride they were in for to start with, but they, you know, they've really been resilient, and, and I just tell you, you're blessed. Every one of them is passionate, and they're getting used to a new pace, but I think they'll enjoy that pace. They're all interested in making things better, and I just wanted to publicly tell you and thank them for their hard work. You, you really are blessed, every one of them. Jim's not here, but the rest of the workers that I've met have been outstanding, been very forthright, and talked to me about issues and things they see and concerns they have, and I'll give you some of that as we get through a couple emails, but I just wanted to publicly thank these guys that are here tonight, and they're real troopers, and I appreciate it. Sorry, I should have said that earlier, and I apologize.
All right, if that's it, then we will go to 14 on Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
Well, we are going to have a commission, a planning commission meeting this month, we have somebody on this, so there will be a planning commission, but it won't be on the regular day, I believe it's on the 22nd, and that's at 6 o'clock. So, and I want to thank the city manager for interviewing all of the commissioners and giving us a chance to, for his opinion and our opinion, so, thank you.
Commissioner Bryson?
A few quick things. First, I want to wish everyone to have a happy and safe Halloween, please watch out for the kiddies. Second is just a reminder, now that the leaves are getting, turning colors, starting to drop, if you have a storm sewer in front of your house, please take a minute, clear the leaves off of it so the water will drain. And then, other than that, I just encourage everyone, please come and vote. That's it.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Well, it's my last chance to squawk before the election, so I got a couple things to say. First, I want to thank city employees for keeping up with everything here as we move into fall and winter's right around the corner. We had a lot of items on tonight's agenda for DPW resources, and I think this is really important as we move forward, and, and this is for all of our city employees. If there's material, you need to do your jobs, let us know, so we can get that taken care of. This is really important to keep up services, and I'm glad to have seen these items come up today. With the election coming up, please register to vote, please vote. You've got a lot of different options to vote, it's probably the most consequential national election, and it's a very consequential local and state election. We, we've got a lot going on here, and we need your participation to make it matter and make it count. In order to vote, being informed, doing your research, getting your information, it's a challenge these days. There is a lot of misinformation out there to this end, to the city staff. Jason, thank you for the fact sheets and the proposals, you can find these on the city website, we've got both detailed and quick versions, so you can understand what's at stake here. Please take the time to call the city offices, talk to city offices if you are concerned or confused about any of those. When it comes to voting for your candidates, please take time to do due diligence on your research. It is, there's an odd amount of AI-generated material, of course, now, you know, these videos and images, but, but a lot of misinformation out there, and it's important that we take time to get it right, check those sources, figure out where it's coming from and what it's going to mean. November 5th is Election Day, this is the, the last time you're going to see the city commission before this goes, and so good luck, please vote, and please treat our poll workers with kindness and patience, they're doing a very long job, the early voting is relatively thankless to be working, so be patient with them, and they're going to help you out. Finally, with that, have a happy, happy Halloween. Second, being, watching out for the kiddies, and it's the best holiday, so enjoy it while you can. Thank you.
Thanks. So there was a Historical Society meeting in terms of other boards. A lot of the, the crux of the content of that you already heard in a previous agenda item, however, I'll cover what wasn't necessarily covered, so we've moved along in the application to be a certified local government, and that is progressing. Again, that would be something that if we were to proceed with that and be awarded it, we would be one of 42 other certified local governments in the state, we'd be the 43rd, and that trims the pool of grant monies down quite a bit, so we would, we would be recognized ahead of many others who aren't members of a certified local government. So that would definitely help our grant recognition from the perspective of either 300 Broadway or anything throughout the city. Another thing that was approved in that meeting was to look into getting a fieldstone garden border around the bandstand, and some members of the Historical Society were at a function in Port Huron where they learned that there was free fieldstone at, I believe, the Goodles, the fairgrounds, and that they would be able to get that for free, and city manager, the city manager agreed to look into potentially volunteering a truck, but he need, there's some information to be gathered before then, but a fieldstone border does suit the historical, you know, requirements of that. Yes, and then the, for our historical assets list on the Nautical Mile District, with the resignation of a few historic commissioners, some of those properties were left unassessed, and we have 21 more to do, I will be issuing separately to commissioners five or so to look into, and then that will be done. And then, secondly, I attended a Walk for Life or Walk to Remember for suicide awareness this past weekend at East China Park, and it was a very solemn, but also kind of enlightening and, and very educational experience for me, and this is the second one I've been to, and it just goes to show, again, the people care about you, and if you need a place to reach out, you merely dial 988 or 911, they will get you to the appropriate person, but very frequently, just somebody to talk to is, you know, the difference between somebody deciding to or not. So it was a very enlightening experience again, and I very much appreciated it. So on a bit of a happier note, thank you, department heads, again, I can't echo that sentiment enough. Jason, for all your work on the social district, that's like, for me, I mean, who was pretty passionate about that, it's really a dream come true to see that just be super streamlined, and the QR codes for the bars, I mean, that's exactly the way, you know, it sort of was envisioned or hoped for at the beginning. I still really appreciate the idea of revisiting it every year to tweak and perfect, but I really appreciate your work there. Aaron, thank you so much for jumping in on DPW, and Mike for jumping in headfirst, and again, all the, Katie, for all the stuff you did with the healthcare and balancing our budget, or, you know, attempting to anyway, but, you know, it's a lot of work you put in to save the city a fair bit of money, and personally, I really appreciate it. So I just wanted to mention that, all you guys are doing a great job, and I, I just want to say, Mike mentioned it already, but, yeah, you just, you guys have just got a new boss, and that's not for nothing, you know, that's a pretty big thing in anybody's career, so I thank you for, you know, welcoming him, and Mike, I thank you for, you know, I've heard nothing but good things so far, so keep it up. That's all. Wait, sorry. Vote, for sure. Please, this is a very consequential election, particularly locally, I would say, and, yeah, go out, make your voice heard. That's it. Sorry, I promise that's actually it.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Hi, there was a library board meeting, I attended, and there was just a few things, we had some discussion about the board rules and regulations, and Mike and Jason are coming to the January meeting to answer any questions and get them following all the rules and regulations. They officially changed the meeting time from 7:00 PM to 6:30 PM, so we can put that in the records. And then there is a Marine City Public Library book sale from Thursday, October 31st to Tuesday, November 5th, and you can donate books and, or buy books, please donate the books before October 31st. And we're going to put this flyer on the Marine City Facebook site and hopefully the, the official website, so you can see all the information. And please vote, there are some consequential things here locally and of course nationally, but there are some things that affect your taxes on this ballot, so please get out and vote. Thank you.
All righty. There was a Fair 30 meeting last night, we, they put the new rescue truck in service, so you can see that, we have three new hires, we have a committee created for, we have to start looking at a new engine, because you have to order them two years ahead of time. We're working on possibly setting up retirement funds through MERS for the fire department, and we're also going to start looking at another full-time paid position, because it's getting very difficult for one guy to be there 24/7, so it's just a matter of time for all of us on there. The Halloween trunker, the trick or treat is usually the same, 5 to 8:00 PM on October 31st. And then the old newsboys, we've started up, we're going to have our paper sales on November 29th and 30th, that's the Thanksgiving weekend, so be kind in not to run us over. The Santa Parade is going to be November 26th, Andrea Schenk is handling that, she does a real good job, if you know anybody that wants to put any floats in or any. in a lot of time, all of them do, and you got to thank them all because of all the need we have, we know we're going to have a lot more kids, we had about 250 last year, we know it's going to increase this year, but it is nice that this community always supports it and that we can provide all that for those kids. Get out and vote, and thanks for the clarification on the ballot proposals. That's it.
Thank you. All right, I just have a few things for tonight. First of all, I want to say, congratulations to Chief Joe Steinster, who's normally here. He was elected this week, President of the St. Clair County Fire Chiefs Association.
Yes. Yay.
To hold that position. Secondly, CED Board, we've had a meeting change, we canceled our October meeting, and what we did was we consolidated that with a November meeting, we changed that to November 13th, because otherwise it would have been the Wednesday right before Thanksgiving. So instead of having canceled the November meeting, we just consolidated those both on November 13th. Something I did want to clarify also regarding the CED, a previous meeting in July, there was a notation in the minutes about a member of the EDA that was here and had been discussing a data mining facilities. There has been no facilities that have been discussed or proposed in Marine City, so I've seen some information out there, and I just wanted to clarify that that has not been proposed or discussed in Marine City. Again, I was going to talk, just like what everyone else did, about voting. Please remember to vote, we've got important federal, state, and local level things on our ballots, and when you cast your ballot, you are asserting your voice in the decision-making process, and all of these will affect your daily life, whether it's federal, state, or local, so please remember to vote. And then just a couple other things I want to say real quick, and please, if anyone in the commission disagrees, please speak out, but I'd just like to say, over the past year, our current commission has faced a variety of challenges, and our collective efforts have led to meaningful progress, and I'm very proud of what we have accomplished and looking forward to future accomplishments. We're making significant investments through our safe drinking water project in our water system to ensure that every resident has access to clean, safe drinking water, while that will simultaneously work on the street improvement projects that would be repairing our roadways. Now, at the same time, if the roadway is not getting fixed through the water plan, we are working on prioritizing the other streets, and those will be getting done as well. These initiatives are important, they're vital in the quality of life in the city. Along with those efforts, we've begun the important process to start addressing updates with our city ordinances to ensure they reflect our city's evolving needs and priorities. These updates will streamline processes for both business and enhance the safety and quality for our residents. We are also working towards the adoption of our new master and rec plans. These are comprehensive guiding plans for the city, they are living, they are amendable documents, and they are a commitment to enhancing our city, and they are meaning to be all-inclusive to fostering community engagement. The work will continue to support new businesses and those already rooted in our community. We are committed to creating favorable environment to entrepreneurship while also helping our existing businesses to thrive. This only drives economic opportunity for the city, but it also helps in creating job opportunities. While we move forward, we remain united in our vision for a vibrant, sustainable, and inclusive city. Together, our community can reflect our shared values and will continue to be a place we're all proud to call home. Finally, I want to thank this board and the community for allowing our meetings to further the business of the city and help getting the business of the city done. Thank you very much. And a thank you to our city manager, all of our department heads, and all of our city employees for the great work that you do. You are appreciated very much. And with that, motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Perfectly said.
Very good.